Any second Jamie, just give me the high.
It's like, I know people.
I would like to call to order the city of Sagatuck City Council Workshop for January 4th, 2023. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
Here. Here.
Leo, excuse, the list is used.
Muncie.
Here.
Stanton.
Here.
Thank you. With that, I would like just to ask the council for a voice vote on the excused absence for council member Leo. And council member Lewis, who is participating via Zoom but is not here for quorum. So do I have a voice vote approving those two absences? Motion to approve?
So move.
So motion from Gardner, second, second from Stanton, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you very much. Do we have any agenda changes for today's workshop? I'm hearing none. With that, that takes us to item four. We have a guest speaker. Dan Fox is here from the Sagatuck Township Fire District Board as our representative. And has some items to share with us based on their December 19 meeting, I believe. So Dan, you have the floor. Thank you for coming.
Intuitously stopped in a. Ryan Heiss's office said, no, I wouldn't be here because I thought I just had to come on Monday. Here you go. And I raised. Home and. And time on the computer. Anyway. Basically, there are three mini topics that I want to update you all on. The first of those, you probably already know most of, if not all of it. The recent, most recent full month statistics, which were November statistics. Response times actually down a little bit, but basically stable for the full year. Plus or minus six minutes, mostly minus six minutes below that. Up 10% annually. And importantly, from the management or from the resource management that the overlapping calls, two calls. Received simultaneously or requiring crews to operate simultaneously are up that continue to be up and they've been up for some time. All of the remaining statistics, including detailed, highly detailed EMS. Response times or response. Cases and so forth are there in in the report you should already have. And if you don't have it, it's available. You don't have it. It's available online. I'll email you the link. I have it here, but it's like every link, it's got 700 figures in it. So that's the first topic. Second topic. Covered at quite a bit of length in the in the fire board meeting. Which I know Ryan said he watched, so this may not be all that much news to some of you, but if you watched. The Fire District Board has established an ad hoc planning committee. Related to emergency medical response resources and dedication, so forth. I thought the simplest way to give you the. Best understanding of what this is about is to read a quote from the chief. On this subject, he said. The establishment of the ad hoc planning committee. Will allow for the gathering of analytical and statistical data by some very profound medical professionals who are citizens in our fire district. Excuse me, response area. Potential goals, which could be modified and added to. Would include revised medical control protocols to unburden advanced life support crews and the emergency medical system overall. Advanced life support can respond to the more urgent critical care needs based on emergency medical dispatch protocol prioritization. Essentially, unburdening the ALS resources by implementing a basic life support. Transport system that can respond and transport and provide transport to reduced priority medical. Emergency medical incidents when delays or no availability conditions occur with the ALS. Advanced life support response. I probably, I'm going to assume, but maybe I shouldn't assume. The distinction between BLS, basic life support, and ALS, advanced life support. Is real important. If if you're a patient, it's also important from a, from the fire district. Resource management standpoint, because advanced life support. Were to be offered directly by the fire district, whereas right now it's contracted with two separate. Contractors, life and AMR in Holland. Where that to be offered, it has dramatic. Multi-million dollar cost implications for the fire district. So. The basic life support system essentially is EMS people able to treat. Thralls, ankle injuries, things of this nature, you know, collapsed on the street with no, you know, but with still with. Life signs and so forth. And treat them without calling the advanced life support in. Doing so, if and if the district provided basic life support, transport. That frees advanced life support resources to the most serious cases. There's obviously cost doing. Additional cost to doing basic life support. Within the fire district and there are different. Levels of resource commitment that could be made against that. And that is going to be the province of. That the committee is going to try and wrap its, wrap its arms around. The lady that that Greg referred to in that quote. And and he's delighted. There's literally an MD on this committee from each of the, each of the jurisdictions here, Douglas. And the, and the township. And they include Didi Dupree, who's an MD psychiatrist. Cindy Miller, who's a registered nurse and former firefighter. Mark Miller, her husband, who's an MD. David Blatt, who's an MD and former. Sagatuck. Douglas Fire District. EMT. He did, as I understand it from short chats with David, he, he was in emergency medical. Response in Chicago for a number of years. John Williams, who's an MD. And then the remaining two members are Jane Verplink, who's the chair of the. Fire Board and Greg Janik, who obviously is the chief. And the committee will add and subtract members as the planning dictates. Develop. I mean, they don't know for sure. I've mentioned Ryan this afternoon, conceivably someone from, we're going to be acquiring an ambulance or ambulances or whatever, perhaps someone with. A high level of experience in specing equipment and so forth in that market, who knows, but it's intended to not be a fixed committee. It's going to change. The third topic is a simple request, which I didn't mention to you this afternoon because I didn't have my notes with me when you talked. A simple request from the district that any. Questions you all may have related to the fire district budget or budgeting process or what have you, which. We're half a year into that, but the budget, so. To try and avoid difficulties encountered last year with last minute requests and trauma and drama and the rest of it. If you have them, the sooner the better. I mean, the district and I myself, or whoever is necessary, will get answers for them. It just becomes for the district resources, the firefighters and so forth, and Chief Janik and Deputy Chief, whatever. As you get closer to the end, it becomes much, their time becomes much less available. So just a simple request. And the last thing, I said three, but there's a bonus. Good news since the board meeting and in fact, yesterday, they opened the mail over there and there was a $10,000 check. From an anonymous donor. The fire district that donor had sometime within the last 18 months, maybe two years, I can't remember. Had already donated $15,000 to the fire district. So and that. The, as I said, that individual requested anonymity and we're respecting that, although Greg's going to try and meet. And chat more about where that money, if there's a specific request, last time there was and. Or maybe this time as well, but in both cases very useful. So. Any questions you may have?
Any questions for Dan?
I was at the meeting as well and was very, very informative and I appreciate all the time that they spent on the EMT report. My question, you said that there's a link. Is that provided online that you're going to share with Jamie? Is that something I can find on your website?
Yes.
And where, where can that be? Where would that be?
It's, it's under the heading of statistics.
Statistics, okay. I see it right here now.
Okay, that's where.
And I've got the meetings through November of 2022.
That's not a meeting. That's the report for that month.
Right.
Which is what I was just discussing. The most current data we had as of the 19th of December were the. The full month data for November.
I see.
Which is what that is.
Got it. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, I want to know where to find these reports. So they can get them every, every month.
I'm sure someplace along the line, everybody's websites is going to get better. And I'm sure the fire district will too, because it can be hard to find stuff, but it's all there in. Tremendous details.
Right. Any, any other questions for Dan? If none, just Dan, will you publish the kind of meeting schedule for the ad hoc committee or?
I expect they will all have to ask. I'm not on it. So.
Okay.
But it's a reasonable question. And I was. I'm not sure that you may know, I'm not sure the protocol or the requirement, whether that's a required. Open meeting or not, there's only two members of the fire board involved, Jane and Greg. So I'm not sure if it is. But maybe it is. I'll ask the question. I'll certainly get an answer.
Typically, if it's an official. Committee of a public body, those meetings would have to be advertised.
Yeah, well, like I say, I'm perfectly happy and I'm, nobody's starting to hide anything. I can tell.
No, no, we're just, I mean, I think I'm just curious and very interested in it. I'm, I'm, I'm thrilled. I recognize some of the names on the ad hoc committee. Got some good talent on that committee. So.
I know it's, it's, and Greg is delight, absolutely delighted. So.
Great. Well, Dan, thank you so much. This is very useful information.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That takes us to item five, which is public comment on agenda items only. I would ask anyone in the audience to please approach the podium and also state their name and where they live just for, for the clerk's benefit. And if you could limit your comments to three minutes, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Hello, Wendy Coulson, Maple Street. I want to thank you guys for putting the erosion issue on the agenda. This has been a long, long process. And I particularly want to thank Gregory and Helen here. They came out and visited the site. So they're up to date. And I know you all have visited them too. So I thank you. I would love to see a resolution to this issue very soon. It's very worrying to have to worry about this issue. I have brought my engineer, my lawyer, just to answer any questions that you may have. I don't know if you want to do that during the discussion. Or I know that Brandon was going to speak as well. During the three minutes, but I don't know. If you have any other questions, you can direct.
Okay, I think if, if, if any of the folks that you brought with you have prepared remarks, I'd like to make sure get into the record, probably now would be the best time to do it. If they can do it within the three minute period. Although I'm sure, well, I can't speak for the rest of council. I think after our engineer presents, you know, on this. I'm sure there, we could have a more of a deliberative and bring your team up to address questions that may come from council.
Okay. And I do want to give a shout out to John. He's been working hard on this too. Appreciate that.
So really up to you if, if anyone that you brought with you wants to put anything to the record immediately.
Yeah, hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Chris Meyer. I'm a real estate lawyer here for Wendy. I think we'll just wait till after John has had an opportunity to talk. Brandon's prepared a response. We, we have an opinion. We've read his report and we have an opinion. Probably makes sense for him to put his report out there first and then for us to do a response, because I think that will make the most sense to everybody.
Okay, very good. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to make public comment? I do have one hand up online, so I'll turn it over to Barry Johnson. If Barry, if you'd like to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Barry Johnson, city of Sagatuck. And I'm commenting on the. The new agenda format that you're talking about today. I think it's, it's really good, but sorry to be a pest. But I would. Respectfully recommend that you move the guest speakers up so they don't have to sit around to 15 or 16 staff and board reports. You know, it's just that let those poor people get their thing done and, and get out of there before we get down to business. So I would recommend. Guest speakers going up to item seven. And then moving everything down. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Barry. Appreciate it. Any other hands up that you can see, Jamie? I don't see anything on the screen. Okay. With that, that will conclude our first public comment period. And that takes us to discussion items. Item A, you'll find on page two of your packet. That is the Maple Street erosion concern. And I think we're just going to turn it right over to John, Mr. Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have John Moxie here from Police in Vanebray. Page two begins his engineering report and I think he's ready to roll.
Yeah, thanks. Good afternoon, everybody. Happy New Year. Jamie, I'm going to have you scroll down to my third figure. I think is going to be the most valuable, kind of from a talking point perspective, and it might be sideways. So you might have to. One more. Yep, right there. If you could get that in view, I think that'll be the most practical way to kind of get everybody. Familiar with the area. I'm glad you all have been out there, a little bit of familiarity with it. I'm going to kind of walk through the report. Feel free to dive into any level of detail that you want. Stop me at any point. But I'm going to kind of present the report, which is kind of the culmination of about a year's worth of work. Last year, we. Prepared a draft report, issued that in the spring. Wendy and her team looked at that. And then we, we kind of incorporated some of their thoughts and that November 22 is when it was issued. So that's, that's where I'm going to be going. Again, feel free to, to jump in at any point and, and offer comments, questions, whatever. We can make this as informative as you want it to be. From a regional perspective, you can see the, the cyan, that, that blue line work there. There's two natural drainage courses that. Kind of come from this area, basically. The one further to the north that crosses Maple Street there, it's actually a culvert that runs under Maple Street. Near where the city's wastewater pump station is. If you're familiar with that, it's on the, what the pump station is on the west side of Maple Street, just north of Mason Street. And basically, the, the area east of Maple Street in the township. Kind of collects and flows under Maple Street into the city through that existing culvert there. And then that, that stream continues on. Into Goshorn Creek, into the nature preserve area, and eventually makes its way to the Kalamazoo River. The area of concern is kind of an offshoot of that, that mainstream tributary, whatever we want to call it. And really, I almost hesitate to call it a stream because the source of this stream is the city's stormwater collection system. It's not from a spring. It's not from a pond, something like that. It is, the source of this is the, the city system. So any water that flows in that stream, 99% of it is coming from the city storm sewer. It flows back behind Wendy's property there through the, the natural area and then joins up with that larger. Natural ravine kind of flows back behind the, the high school there. So that's the area that we're talking about. And then if you look at the figure there, the green line work is the city's storm sewer network, catch basins, manholes, pipe. And then the red line work there is identifying to the best of our records, at least, what portion of the city's system. Is tributary to that outfall there at Mason and Maple Street. That's, that's what's. Water that falls in that red line by and large is, is, has a tendency to make it there. Whatever doesn't soak in, whatever doesn't evaporate. That, that just based on the topography in the city system. So that's where we are in the world there. Moving on. So the, the city just coincidentally had a pretty robust capital improvement. Program going in the last about 10 or 15 years ago, kind of in the late 2000s into the, the 2010s there. And a lot of those projects happened to take place in this red circle, basically in this red boundary. The city started by improving Pleasant Street, a portion of Pleasant Street, you'll see there near the bottom middle. Flows into here and, and all of these streets prior to 2008 were. Very rural looking ditched streets. They had open ditches. They had cross culverts for. For driveways. They, they did have some storm sewer. The ditches would feed into storm sewers, things of that nature. After a rain in this area, you would see a lot of standing water, a lot of puddles. That was a main driver of the, the projects that I'm going to describe. And as these improvements were made to the city's systems to try to eliminate ponding, puddling, things like that. It, it makes the whole system more efficient. Those, those ponds and puddles, while they are unsightly and the, the property owners don't like them. They do have a benefit to, to places downstream in that they are holding that water. They are, they are. Reducing the, the maximum flows that are coming downstream. So unintended consequence of some of these projects that I'm going to describe is they make the system more efficient. That which has a tendency to make it more erosive at the downstream end. We're, we're getting water to where we want it to be faster, more efficiently. So Pleasant Street was 2008. That street went from, it didn't even really have ditches. It was really just a paved street that had kind of a, I wouldn't even call it a swale. It wasn't really a defined place. Water just ran off to the edge of the road, sat there. There was some storm sewer. Eventually, when it rained hard enough, it would make it in there. That was upgraded to a curbed road, more like you'd see throughout the city. The storm sewer was replaced, improved. That was 2008. 2009 came elegant street. And a big portion of elegant street is, is within this boundary. That's the main east west street, kind of in the middle of the red district there. Same thing, open ditches, little bit of storm sewer to kind of take it from the ditches into the, into the city system. That was, ditches were enclosed, street was curbed, storms were replaced. And Mason Street, not as much of an impact from Mason Street, but that had an asphalt curbing. That was put in place that did have ditches before the 2011 project. So similar story there, keeping water on the road. To get to where it needs to be, water flowing on the road, obviously is going to move faster than water moving in a ditch, especially when the ditch is full of brush and weeds and everything else. And then Maple Street, Maple Street, the north south street at the east edge of the drainage district here. Partly because that ditch was a, a problem to maintain. It, it was overgrown. It was deep. It was eroding. The city enclosed that ditch, didn't eliminate the ditch, but enclosed the ditch and left a more shallow swale up above. So the water from our, our side of. Maple Street still runs off into the grassy area, but then it, it kind of runs through shallow swales into a series of catch basins. So those are the four projects that, again, in that 10 to 15 year age category that, that fall within here. You'll see in the, in the report, Google Street View, I love as a tool because it does keep historic records of what they've done. They drove all of these streets. Prior to that timeframe, so you can kind of get a better visual. Driving out there now, it, it looks a lot better. I mean, you can see just the stark difference. It, it looks better, but. Again, there's unintended consequences from, from making some of those improvements. I will also note that in Michigan here. Regardless of what your, your. View on, on global warming and climate change and things like that is, but Michigan has had, just from a statistical standpoint, has had a lot. Shorter duration, higher intensity storms in the past few years, for whatever reason. Part of that was related to the rising of the lake levels, things of that nature. So there have been more frequent. Design level and exceeding design level type events. Erosion is a natural process. So this, this stream water course, whatever you call it, has been eroding since the beginning of time. That's what formed it. But changes that we as, as people make within the infrastructure in that red boundary changed the response of this watershed. So it, it's two different things. It's, it's nature and then it's, it's our human activity within that area. So what we did is we, we looked at a number of different alternatives. For how would we mitigate these unintended consequences of, of the improvements that we made elsewhere in the collection system? Just looking at it from a big picture viewpoint, sometimes when we do a study like this, one option jumps off the page that this is, this is the right thing to do. This case, it's more of a cost benefit progression. Basically, the, the higher the price tag comes with these things, the more benefit. Comes with them. And a lot of them could be compiled and done concurrently. Basically, you could, you could. Just like as we added project down to project on project, you know, kind of had a cumulative impact, you could cumulatively try and mitigate some of those impacts. First one is, we, we called it a property specific kind of detention retention strategy. This would be. Trying to contain as much water on each of these parcels. One of the reasons. That it's, it's tricky to deal with stormwater in an area like this is you have these small half acre type parcels, residential areas. There just isn't a place to store stormwater. In a developed area like this. So one of the thoughts kind of came from Eagle early on in the process to try to capture, collect, store. Use as much stormwater as we can in those 40-ish parcels that kind of fall in that red boundary. That would be things like rain barrels. A lot of folks, they became pretty popular in the seventies. At the end of your, your gutter system for your house, instead of just running it, you know, into the storm sewer, running it on your driveway. You have a little rain barrel there and you use that to water your plants, your flowers, whatever. Even that 50 gallons or whatever, if you do it enough times and enough places. That slows the, the rate that, you know, those barrels are going to get filled up, obviously, over the course of a storm, but that helps to slow the whole process down. We call it time of concentration in the engineering terms. The, the longer we can slow that peak down, the, the more spread out that peak is. So that's, that's one option. The, the tricky part of that one is it really takes buy-in from the community. Sagatuck is a, is a special community, I think, though, in that people are very engaged. So that, that could have merit to, to going that route. It takes education. It could be the city participating in some of the costs. I, I, the thought I had is, do you purchase a few dozen of these rain barrels? And make them available to people just to kind of spark some engagement that way. It wouldn't have to be rain barrels. We've got a couple of other things. It could be rain gardens. Just making a depression in your yard and routing your water to that, a little butterfly garden, something like that. Again, it takes, it's, it's on private property before it gets to public property. So yeah, the, part of the, part of the problem with things like rain gardens is there, you have to want them. You have to want to maintain them. And, and by and large, the people not wanting standing water in their yard is why we are where we are. We talked about cisterns, dry wells, a very, basically an underground rain barrel just gives the water an opportunity to soak in. That a rain barrel traditionally wouldn't. Those are some of the ideas that we had, just kind of on a site specific, doing the same thing as many times as we can in that red boundary. You'll notice we're presenting costs for, for all of these. Obviously, I've got them rounded to the nearest $1,000. At, at this level, it's really just leaving it at that level of detail, just so that you can compare them. It's, it's still. A big picture view when I, when I show $151,000, that, that's more like 140 to 160, probably, just to kind of get you thinking of. Kind of where that cost benefit lies. Obviously, this would all get refined as, as we move from study into kind of a preliminary planning design. So that, that was kind of our first idea there. Second idea was reestablishing ditching, basically undo some of the things that were done. During some of those projects 10 or 15 years ago. Obviously, that's going to have a negative impact to all those people that were calling for these projects to be done at the time. But it was an option we at least wanted to throw out there. The one reason we wanted to throw it out there early in the study is that Mason Street has an opportunity to, to do that in. A fairly low cost, a good cost benefit way. Basically, the ditching that was eliminated could be put back on that east end of Mason Street there. And we wouldn't even have to remove all the asphalt curbing that was put in. We could just add some spillways to let the water off the road before it gets down to the corner. And I, I think that would be a good thing to do. We've, we've put that pretty high on our cost benefit list. Going beyond Mason Street, it's not really practical. You'd have to redo basically everything that was done in those. You know, millions of dollars that were spent in this area. So that was reestablished ditching. Redirect wet weather flow is another one. We do have two, you know, you see the two cyan lines there. This would involve extending the city's storm sewer to the north to go toward that, that larger water course, the one that comes from the township, flows under the road. There. So that would be a few hundred feet of storm sewer and, and related infrastructure, repairing the road, things of that nature. To, to take that at least wet weather flow further north. We, we wouldn't, we would set it up such that. We wouldn't direct all of the water to the north because that would eliminate kind of that natural. Like I say, ninety-nine percent of the water in that little water course is from our storm sewer. So what we would do is have a control structure that would allow flow today to to continue through a smaller pipe um, and go into that stream. And then when when the flows rise, would would direct it to the north. That was the idea there. The other thought there is is when we're putting in, you know, a few hundred feet of of storm sewer pipe, we could oversize that pipe and we call it inline detention, instead of building a detention pond or something like that, we're providing the volume in the terms of a uh, of a pipe. So that's kind of an add-on to that uh, redirect wet weather flow option there, to there. Price tag in the one to two hundred thousand dollars with or without some inline detention, upsizing that pipe obviously is is a a much bigger infrastructure that we'd be building. That would be the main cost difference there. Uh, and close the open channel. Uh, the main problem is erosion of the bank just downstream of uh, the city's outlet. We could extend our public system with an easement and um, get it past the area of concern, basically, move move the problem downstream um, to a less sensitive area, basically. Eagle's not going to like that. And even though this stream is is a hundred percent from our water, from our storm sewer system, it's still a natural environment. They're they're probably going to push back on that. Wendy has already said, you know, part of the reason that property was attractive to her is that it was an open environment and natural stream. So in closing, that has has several disadvantages, probably not viable. From a technical standpoint, it it can certainly be done. It's just a matter of permitting and other environmental challenges. Extending the public um, storm water system, not necessarily sewer, but basically through an easement or something like that, incorporate this open channel into the city's infrastructure so that we we don't run into the um, problem of spending public money to improve a private uh, property. Basically, we would incorporate some of this open channel as the the end of basically just extend the end of our system from that right of way line into the um, private property with an easement, something like that. That would open up the options of um, addressing some of the bank erosion through various means, um, either through rock rip rap. Steel sheet pile is a pretty aggressive way to do that, but it's a little more foolproof. Various things we can do basically to enhance that open channel uh, and armor it, make it make it less susceptible to erosion. Uh, price tag on there, again, just for comparative purposes, we we came up with um, budget of about a hundred and twenty-four thousand uh, for that option. Then we ta- kind of take a jump in cost. Constructing a regional detention basin. We call it a regional detention basin. If we were doing, you know, if if we were developing a new parcel in town with uh, a new gas station or whatever um, we're building. We would provide some kind of a site specific detention for that property before we allow this new stormwater to enter the public space. We would provide a detention basin of some kind to um, to slow that rate, exactly what we're talking about here. A regional detention basin basically is on the other side of the property line. Once all this stormwater has collected, we we provide detention for multiple properties at one time. That's the regional concept of it. Again, there is not a lot of open real estate to do something like this, but it just so happens that um, on the other side of the the municipal boundary there in the township, the Sagatuck CRC has been talking about and and working on splitting up that north area of their property there, which happens to be right across the street from where we're our current outlet is. Um, so there is some open property there. The the property along Maple Street is not the most ideal for development in in my layman's eyes. I'm not a real estate uh, attorney or engineer or anything like that, but it is it is lower. So that makes it good for us from a topography standpoint, less excavation, but we could work with with them and and try to acquire an easement or some property in that area and then build a build a detention basin, a traditional detention basin, which would be be a vegetated. Uh, basically just a big bowl. Um, we we put our water there first and then slowly let it out into the natural stream. That's that's the traditional form of of stormwater detention. It could still be an open vegetated area. You can still, you know, landscape the the berms and things like that and make it attractive. You could you could work with whoever's purchasing that property or the CRC to to incorporate it into whatever their development is. The other part of it is, since that is in the um, township, that's outside of our jurisdiction as municipality, we would need some buy-in from the drain commissioner. There may be some opportunity to partner with them and and size it such that, you know, as they have more development in this area. All to be determined. That would be something that we would have to chase down if if this is an attractive option. Price tag on this one, a hundred and fifty-two thousand is what we came up with for the the actual project itself. But again, we don't own the property that this project would by and large take place on. So that's um, they were listing the parcels there, the entire two acre parcels, I believe they were kind of splitting up on the order of like two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand. So obviously, the real estate market's going to do what it's going to do, but um, that's just one piece of the piece of the puzzle there. And lastly, um, in a situation, um, a lot of uh, big box retail, when when your footprint of development is taking up just about all of the the land that you have available, a lot of um, projects will incorporate underground detention. It's a more expensive form of detention. You're not just digging up, you know, a big pond. You're you're actually building infrastructure underground with enough volume to to do the same thing. Basically, you're you're creating chambers underground. Uh, they can have a stone bottom so that the water can still have an opportunity to soak in. But basically, um, instead of having that open feature, you're just kind of hiding it under the footprint of other things. In this case, it would be under the under the roadway, uh, because that is the property that we do control. We control the the right of way. Uh, we do have other utilities to contend with. We don't want to build this on top of our water main, on top of our sanitary sewer. Because then someday, if we need to get down to them, we're coming through this new expensive piece of infrastructure that we built. So it's a little challenging inside a right of way. It's a lot easier when you're doing it under a Walmart parking lot or something like that, but it is an option. We we ran it down um, almost four hundred thousand dollars, we think, to do enough of this to have a to have a an impact. Again, the more storage we provide, the more benefit we provide, but just based on a a very basic calculation, a very early calculation, that's kind of what we came up with. So you'll see on our page five there, we kind of tabulated everything. Not necessarily all of these are apples to apples because some of them do have, you know, add-ons and and property purchases and things like that. Thanks, Jamie. One one up there. Yep, perfect. So that's kind of the just the the big picture summary of of everything that we came up with. There's detailed cost estimates in here, just to kind of give a little more insight into what our thought process wasn't getting here. We do have a few schematics in here that kind of show more visually. We can dive into any of that if you'd like to. But yeah, that that in a nutshell is is uh, what our study not necessarily concluded, because again, it's a it's a cost benefit situation. It's it's how much do you want to spend to do the benefit that you want to do? So I'll I'll open it up to
Go ahead, discussion.
Yeah, I was just wondering if we were to be making any improvements to Maple Street, could some of this be incorporated in the improvements to the road itself? And if we're thinking big picture, you know, as far as your opinion goes, doing it the right way, if we're redoing that road at some point, would you be like, is are those things that we could just incorporate into the new road improvements?
Yeah, yeah, that's a great question. Absolutely, it is. Um, we actually had this um, several years ago. We we started down the path of talking to township about Maple Street, replacing the water main, things of that. And we had the project broken out into four parts. And this, some option from this was kind of a placeholder in in one of those four parts. Yeah, definitely, it it would be most cost effective to do it with other work. Some of the things, um, the the Mason Street specifically is is kind of standalone that you're, you know, we could do it with another project. We could do it on our own. That doesn't have as much, but any within that Maple Street footprint definitely is going to be most cost effective to do with other things.
How many homeowners are affected? And is this um, something that should be done anyway, be like like uh, too much overflow for our uh, storm water that's coming through? I mean, do we do do, does the city have a problem other than the fact that it's impacting, obviously, a homeowner? Is there a problem with the with with the waters working now, that notwithstanding?
Yeah, um, as far as I know, and and Wendy, correct me if I'm wrong, I that's the only complaint that we've gotten. There's there's a couple more property owners on this little piece before it connects to the to the overall waterway, water course, whatever it is. It it runs through several properties, but I think this is the only
Are we at capacity or overdoing our capacity for that? Again, not notwithstanding the erosion for the the one one
Yeah, the the public storm sewer has plenty of a capacity. Um, that's all new as of ten or fifteen years ago. That was, you know, designed to provide the capacity. In terms of the stream, the stream has enough capacity. I don't know that flooding is the issue. It's really erosion is the issue. And so when you're when you're looking at a water course, both of those are important. But from a capacity standpoint, it's really the it's not an issue.
Any other questions?
Yeah, um, John Goodseah, thanks for being here today. You threw a lot on the table on this one. There's there's a lot going on on this. You know, first and foremost, I think that uh, Maple Street, in my opinion, is a multi-phase project. You when I think of Maple Street, I think of the south end, south end, south of Alegan. The end north of Alegan, which is the section where Wendy's house is, the next section, then the next section, then the end at North Street and uh, Maple. So I appreciate, I think that's the way this should be looked at is, okay, which portion of Maple Street should be looked at first? In my opinion, this space here for various reasons is probably the priority. And then the north end, because that's been a that that was, that's been an issue as long as I can remember. We used to play down there when it flooded. I mean, that that's and it's still floods. So I think this all ties back into what you mentioned early on is a capital improvement project in the Pacer study. That all has to be put together. This has to be put into that and then we have to just be able to decide, okay, this project may be three years down the road to what whatever. All of the projects have to be scheduled and do the best that we can to plan ahead and hold some timelines and accountability to our citizens that these are planned out. And of course, things change, emergencies happen. Understand that, but I think where we're lacking right now is just having that plan in front of us as as speaking as a sole council member that I have a sense of what the priorities are, but I want to see them scheduled. Um, and a couple of just responses to your points. This area has has developed quite a bit, and I'm just curious as to whether the development has contributed to the issue, which I'm assuming it has to some extent. I'm thinking about Wendy, when when was your house built? Okay. The corner up at Alegan, that would be the northwest corner of Alegan and um, excuse me, Maple. Houses were torn down. That's ripe for development. There's going to be increased capacity or increased um, there's going to be increased drainage from there. Then the house that just went in on the corner, the southwest corner, that same intersection's adding to this issue as well. So the point being is that I think we have to think about ten fifteen years down the road. What we do today is how is it going to help us for these additional properties are going to be, you know, presumably developed, and I have to assume they're going to be. Um, and also, you know, you talk about the impact of climate change. Whether you believe in it or not, you can see the impact of something going on here, whether it's high water, whatever, and that water comes streaming down that street like like nobody's business. And the uh, rain barrels, which we actually had one in the city of Chicago, is a very popular project. The issue I see here in Sagatuck is that a short-term rental property owner is going to be about low maintenance, get that water off my property as fast as possible, so my guests are not impeded by it. So I would love a rain barrel on my property, uh, because I think it's a cool thing. We had one in Chicago, but I think that's something that is a great solution. It's it's ecologically, you know, positive, but I just don't think a lot of people are going to jump on it for they just want it low maintenance. So those are just kind of my thoughts in terms of consideration on this particular proposal in terms of what makes sense from a budget standpoint, as well as from a development and financing standpoint and project standpoint. So that makes sense?
Yep, absolutely, absolutely. Nope, you don't disagree with any of us.
It's a challenge.
Yeah.
I have another question. Is a dry well, um, did you work on the, there's a house on Manchester and Campbell? They had a, we used to call it Lake Manchester. The ducks were swimming in it and all that. Now, it was a much bigger property, but um, the city came out, I believe the city was involved, and I don't know to what extent that the homeowner had to be involved. But they dug that ditch out further and then they put in a lot of rocks. It looks like it slowed the water down to go into it. Now, is that what the dry well is?
No, no, a dry well would be an actual, like a picture, an oversized manhole typically. They can take several forms, but when I when I use that term, that's usually what I'm thinking of. And instead of being a a solid piece of precast concrete, it's it's got holes in it.
Okay.
And you would bury it in stone sand.
What the city did really took down the water level. It appears to be working. I don't know if that, is that an option?
It's a little bit different problem there. Yeah, that was more of a flooding problem. This is more of an erosion problem. So a little little bit different side of the stormwater spectrum. In that case, uh, it was uh, graded. Um, the the ditching was improved through there to to try and get that water.
That would fall into the ditching.
A a little bit, but again, we're kind of trying to solve two different problems.
Yep. Yep. Great. Um, if no one else has questions, I've got a couple. Um, and Ryan, you may build input on this as well. What is your sense of how much the activities being undertaken next door by our neighbors in the township is impacting our dr- our drainage? From my perspective, I'm seeing nothing but increased development and reduction of areas to capture water along Blue Star Highway, I think. And I I think that trend is going to continue. So just any thoughts on kind of where we are now, based on what our neighbors are up to and and where that's likely to be headed? And Ryan, you may have had some conversations with township counterparts as well.
I have, Mr. Mayor. And John's been involved in those conversations about development on Blue Star Highway, so he can probably speak intelligently to this.
Yeah, so one of the figures, actually, the first figure in there, Jamie, if you want to scroll to that one, um, is a drainage map that was put together by the county's um, engineers. Uh, basically kind of showing the overall drainage in not just this area, but the whole city township. Basically, this was prepared kind of as a precursor to looking at establishing a county drain upstream of that existing culvert that we talked about, that that flows into the city from the township. This is I'm not going to say a hundred percent a separate issue than that, but it's it's ninety-nine percent. Before the study began, I would have said that most of our problem is coming from the township because I, in my head, thought that the culvert running under Maple Street was here and not several hundred feet to the north. Once we started down the road of the study and and drawing our version of that red line, our little red line, all of the water that's coming out of that storm sewer outlet there on the corner is originating from the city, ninety-nine percent. It's hard to say all. But yeah, the the drainage that's in this little piece of the open channel is is all coming from the city. So um, I was I was completely with you. I thought that we had a culvert coming from the township here. We we don't. As soon as we started looking at it, I went as far as questioning the records that I was seeing because I, in my head, thought for sure, there's there's this open little wetland looking area on the other side of the road. It's got to be coming from there, but it wasn't it.
Okay, my my second question is in terms of an infrastructure improvement, to improve our ability to handle stormwater as a city, do you see this or one of these projects, or maybe a suite of these projects being attractive from a grant standpoint, from from the state?
Um, potentially. Um, Eagle has a a stormwater quality um, grant and and Eagle's always going to push you towards kind of solving a a solution as as naturally as you can. And so that would be kind of an open, you know, they they would definitely prefer you that you cut it off at the source with things like rain barrels and rain gardens and things like that. The next most attractive would be some kind of a regional detention basin that kind of promotes a wetland at the bottom, something like that, give some stormwater treatment as part of that. They would, they would go for that far more than the other options that that I mentioned, you know, just extending your storm sewer system, again, even whether they would permit that or not, is is a question.
I guess that leads me to one one additional question is what are your thoughts on on this suite of alternatives? That sort of, I mean, I know we can't predict the weather, we can't predict you know, these events, but in your in your mind, which of these projects are best to sort of future-proof our our infrastructure? If you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah. If if we could come to a an agreement with the um, with the church, that that's pretty foolproof um, in my mind, because, you know, then you've got a you've got a footprint to work with and and we can size it, you know, to 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 Russ's point, to accommodate full buildout of this area. I mean, this area is near full buildout, but every time you pull down a small cottage and build a a bigger one, you're you're increasing the, you know, the hard surface in this in this area.
So your analysis indicates that retention retention capability of that bit of land north of the church could be increased with, with the proper engineering.
Yeah, yeah. We, we have plenty of grade. It, it, you can't see it from, from plan view, looking down, but Maple Street kind of comes down pretty, pretty quickly there. And that storm sewer comes down pretty quickly. So we have grade working on our side for doing something like that.
Any sense of the township's willingness to work on some kind of intergovernmental agreement around this? Because they're going to be dealing with this issue, I would think, at some point, as, as Blue Star continues to develop. My sense is there, there would be some interest there. Okay. Okay, go ahead, Robert.
You know, um, with their plans that they're saying for a roundabout at Alligan and Blue Star. And that they, they, from what I've understood from the manager there, um, they're going to, uh, level that all off. Is that going to help with anything at all?
It's probably more hard surface, uh, in this area. Thankfully, that, that water is, is part of the water that goes to the north, I believe. But at the same time, if, if they do a project like this, they, they should have enough real estate hopefully to, to incorporate some stormwater detention type
Okay.
things into their project as well.
So we have something with, you know, the shorter term things done on, is it Mason Street that where a lot of the water comes out from Tackin and those other side streets and it comes down to Mason to Maple?
Yeah, it comes out of the, um, Maple, South Maple and Mason.
Yeah.
Cause it's feeding under, there's two tubes that come in, well, one is to spill off and one to tube. And they're both feeding into it. Yeah.
So what I'm wondering is you had mentioned like, you know, creating some natural runoff where you cut into the pavement to get Mason or Maple, I'm not sure. Um, where you can do that immediately? And then if we redo the road, we could have some of the.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I spoke about a phased approach in the study for that very reason, because I think the Mason Street sticks out as one that's pretty easy to implement.
And you also talked about, uh, reestablished ditching. Um, and you think that's something that, you know, we could also do or?
At Mason specifically, yes. Yeah, because right now what you have is you have the asphalt curbing and the ditches were largely filled in when that asphalt.
Right.
We could knock down the asphalt curbing in certain spots to let that water out and then just kind of reestablish those ditches. Yeah.
That seems like something that could be done, you know.
Easily and, and that with too much expense.
Yeah, I put 25,000 on it, but honestly, the, the DPW could do a lot of it, or we could add it on to some other contract that we're doing. That was kind of our thought is if we do go and, and redo Tackin Taylor East West, it's right there. It's an easy little, just add it on and do it as part of a project like that.
I'm, I'm, I'm where Lauren is that I, I, I would like to see. I, I would support some short-term mitigations
Right.
that have been discussed. I mean, we've all visited the property and visited Maple. We've seen how the curbing has been sort of, you know, it's created almost like a, a chute.
A funnel.
Uh, uh, on, on Mason. So to, to slow that water down by open, opening up those those spaces, I, I'm, as, as, for one person, I would, I would, for me, I, I would support that. Um, I like the idea though of trying to future-proof. The, the east side of town, frankly, um, you know, we've got problems up and as Russ lined, lined out, we have problems up and down Maple Street that are going to take a much longer term approach. Uh, inter, inter gov- governmental with the township who will also have to be dealing with this issue eventually, I think is also something we should pursue. But I am very sympathetic, Wendy, to your plight and, and I, I would like us, personally, I would support some short-term mitigations, uh, some of these low-cost solutions. Because once again, I think Eagle will sol- will su- um, support them as well, because you know, there, my agency is all about trying to slow the water down, let the water spend some time where it, where it showed up and, and not try to radically change nature, which is what we're unfortunately doing as we develop our communities.
Yeah, again, from a capacity standpoint, we're already future-proofed in this area. In many areas of town, most of the stormwater in the city, most of the outlets are straight to the Kalamazoo River. It's such a big water course. It's, it's a drop in the bucket. This for, for, you know, just because of the way the topography works and everything, we're dealing with a much smaller, more sensitive little.
I guess I'm just, I, I remain mindful of, uh, just increased development in, in West Michigan. And I just continue to think the township, you know, we've seen a lot of things that we didn't expect to see go up along Blue Star. And that's, you know, it's, that's a good problem to have, but it comes with water that needs to be managed. So. Um, any other thoughts?
Yeah. Go, Gregory.
Oh, I just, I have to agree with Lauren and yourself. You know, I'd like to see something that we can do now, and I appreciate your patience, Wendy. Um, and, but I'd also like to keep it in our long-term plan as well. So if there's something we can do now, I'd like to see that happen.
Yeah, we just, I think I got the comments I'm hearing from everybody and that's, let's get this on the schedule. Let's get a timeline. So the property owner can plan for this as well as the city can plan with the engineer to exactly what we feel comfortable doing at this point. And I want to thank you, John, because you have made me remember why I like being on council. This stuff just gets me. Most people's eyes roll back in their head, but this is why I'm here. This is what people want to see us doing. At the end of the day, this is exactly what we're here to do. So thank you.
That tracks exactly with our community survey. Infrastructure remains a top priority. So I'm pleased we're having a detailed discussion about this.
And this is just one.
Right.
Ryan, do you, do you and John have, do you and John have what you need?
No, we do. Yes. The answer is yes. I think, John, you've been working on this probably what, five years?
Several at least. Yeah.
Yeah. This predates me. My predecessor was working on this project before I arrived. So I'm glad that there's some solutions for.
Yeah, I will.
We have, we have hit the sell-by date on this one. We bypassed it. So.
Um, Wendy, thank you for your patience. And I know you, you and your colleagues have been taking notes, but if there's any final thoughts, observations, anything you'd like to share before we move on to our next agenda item? Yeah, go ahead, please. It's just, please identify yourself for the record.
I'm Brandon Simon with Progressive A E. I'm civil engineer hired on behalf of Wendy who owns the property that we've been discussing. Um, I had a bunch of stuff written down, but John did an awesome job running through everything. So I won't bore you with reading the same stuff. He just, uh, spoke to you guys on, but did kind of want to reiterate. We are, would obviously be very appreciative of any iterative small steps that can be taken immediately to help mitigate that. Um, ultimately, we'd be looking for a timeline on when you guys think that could happen, um, both the short-term and the long-term steps. And just to re- reiterate, um, we do believe that long-term, the only permanent solution here would be detention to help offset the, John alluded to, the time of concentration to slow that water back down, make it less erosive. So um, in our opinion, that is the, the best solution. I know it's more costly. Um, it's a better solution both for Wendy and for yourself to future-proof this area. Um, so I just wanted to reiterate that fact that we believe, you know, detention, whether it's in-line, off-site, regional, whatever that is, detention somewhere in this area is the best solution for you know, everybody in the room, I believe. Be happy to work with both John and, and you guys in whatever capacity we can to support that. So that's all I got. And thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I lied. There, there is one more property. So I, John, I don't know if this was studied or not, but I think just off the page, there's a property to the north that's city-owned. Um, I didn't know if that would be something that we could look at in terms of a regional detention basin where it could potentially save you a property acquisition.
That's the property back to the wellhead. City was, city's wellhead.
I believe it's just off the sheet that we have up here. Um, so I just wanted to throw that out there for consideration.
Yeah, you see that house that's on that, just to the left of the blue line, to the right of the, in between that blue line and the, and the football field. That's, yeah, that's the, uh, Wilkinson House.
The what?
Wilkinson, Ross Wilkinson.
That's right, yeah.
And the spot. Is it? Okay. But up to the left of that, that is the area that they're talking, that's city property. That's actually, it's an easement for Cal Lake, but that's where the wellheads are for the city, further, further back up there. So that's just to orient you. That's where he's talking about.
Yeah, there's, there's a boat.
Yeah. All right. Yeah. Thanks, Wendy.
Um, I do want one caution. So my neighbor Cynthia, um, has this property and she was one of the reasons this started because she was getting a lot of flooding. So that's why those curbs went up. So I want to make sure that when you do undo some of your things, we don't recreate an issue for her. And that we don't create issues for my two neighbors here. I don't want to kick the can. I just want to be cautious of my neighbors as well. So they're not, you know, up here too later. So.
Yeah, th- thanks for that, Wendy. There's going to have to be a fair amount of communication, one-on-one communication to the residents up and down Mason. So, I mean, your point is well-taken. So we'll, we'll need to do a lot of communication on what, not only the short-term, but, but sort of the long-term intent is for, for the infrastructure there. So, um, great. Um, well, thanks again. And I think we can put a pin in this one for the time being and, and move on to our next agenda item. Which is item B, uh, commercial fishing accommodations request, which is on page 27 of our packets. Uh, Ryan, I'm going to turn this one over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And then thanks for requesting to have the page numbers on the agenda.
I love it. Yes.
Really helpful. So, uh, thanks, Jamie, for accommodating the mayor's request on that. All right. So, um, I do have a just cover page for, for this item. Um, and I'll just read through it quickly here. Um, one of the Great Lakes premier charter fishing fishermen, fisherwoman services, best chance to, they're losing their current location at 640, 650, uh, Water Street. And, um, they've approached me to, um, have the city look at some, providing some accommodations uh, for their, for their operations. Uh, and so I do plan to present this to the Parks and Public Works Committee to consider the idea of offering a, a limited number of slips, either transient slips or, or some of the, the docks that the city owns. Uh, yeah, I, I don't quite know what that would look like, but, um, at least to entertain the idea. Coughlin Park, um, being an option with the, with the shopper docks, items to consider. I've laid them out, one through four here. Um, in another potential private part, public partnership supported by DNR grants. Uh, to, uh, grant opportunities for restrooms, uh, Coughlin Park, that's something that you've heard about through, throughout the years. Uh, fish cleaning station, uh, would activate the space, restrooms and the fish cleaning station. Um, I would recommend that we try to keep it with their business in, in the city of Sagatuck. Um, given how awesome they are. Um, and then also just something that, you know, I pointed out to Mr. Engel during our conversation, Dave Ingles, the owner-operator and um, along with his family, wonderful people. Um, I, I've pointed out the fact that if the city were to make accommodations for them, that they would have to go through a competitive bidding process. We couldn't just kind of gift, uh, a location for them. So they seem to understand that. And so I'll just stop there.
Great, uh, discussion. Go ahead, Lauren.
So, um, as far as if this was something you were looking at, I know it would take a while to get grants for this sort of thing. Um, but when you say like a competitive bid, would they have to do that on a yearly basis or would, yeah?
So the, the lease terms, what the city can offer, I think is between, I think the maximum is maybe 10 years, but I think that probably the, the, the standard operation would be five years. We do have our attorney who kind of works with, um, leases and, um, I don't know. Can you speak to this as far as? Sorry, can you? Come on up and introduce yourself.
Yeah, thank you. One of your attorneys, uh, at Fay Schultz. Um, so yeah, when I was reading through the packet, I, I, it is, it is an interesting, um, uh, scenario and, and your, your charter and actually your, your city code don't speak to, to leases very much really at all. You talk about competitive bidding for purchasing, uh, personal property, but I think you could do the general concept when you're offering essentially public property to a private, uh, individual or, or company is you do want to get what is essentially fair market value for the improvement that you're leasing or your real property that you're releasing. So um, I think what you'd want to do is, let's say you were putting out a competitive bid process for a lease. And let's say you say the lease is going to be for a five-year term. That, I, I think that's a, I think that's a good way to do it and, and a renewal perhaps every five years. Year to year seems like it may be too inconsistent for this type of, um, uh, use for, for a charter. I, I mean, they have business expectations where you can't you know, have one-year commitments, but I think you put your competitive bid out to a term, let's say five years or so, where they have some certainty for business operations, but then you're also ensuring that you're getting, uh, the proper benefit for the, uh, essentially service or your property that you're leasing.
Yeah, thank you, Kyle. And so. Yes. Yeah. I think, I mean, I think the general idea is that they're making an investment, right? And so they don't, they can't. You wouldn't want to put them through the process to have to go through this year over year. Um, but you, the city also has limitations on how long they can actually offer a lease, as far as I understand state statutes. And the only reason I know a little bit about this is because of some of our dock leases that we have in other areas on the Kalamazoo River.
So you're saying that we, we don't, it doesn't say in the city code or in the charter. Lease, how long can those leases be?
I, I think state statutes would prevail on this one. The example that I have is, if you would recall, the Solbergs uh, offered to do a lease that went beyond like 10 years. And our attorney said, no, you can't, you can't go beyond 10 years if memory is certainly correct, but we can work into those details.
So that was one of the questions on. Anybody else? It'll come back to me.
Yeah, go ahead. Well, here I'm going to pull out my history card. So Dave Engel and I went to high school together and his wife Liz, who many of you know, Century 21. Um, the, his son Hunter is his, um, partner, whatever he wanted. And then his wife Holly. So she's the businesswoman in this. Uh, so I've known Dave for a long time and he's been, uh, you know, he's been doing this his entire life and I fully support the concept. I would challenge us to think outside of the box on this though. And I think about some other communities up and down the lake shore. South Haven comes to mind that they've got a municipal dock that has fish cleaning facilities as well as the fish hanging and so forth. That could be a thought process here. And, um, I'm not suggesting that this be the change, but we might want to be looking at our docks that are down at Wick's Park. In my mind, if you think about something like this, this is where and I haven't talked with Dave. Dave talked to me about this a while back because they said, what are you going to do, man? You're out at, there's always been charter boats. My dad used to have his boat there when he fished. And so this is going to be unusual situation. And I didn't, I didn't really talk with him about where he's going to be getting people on his boat. So presumably is that he's going to get people on his boat somewhere else because the boat's not going to be kept there, but then he's going to clean fish and do his pictures and stuff because it's a great spot. But, um, to me, the Wick's Park location would just seem to be a better fit for this type of activity, especially with Coughlin, because it got people are sitting there with their families and I'm not sure my fans want to sit there and watch people gut fish and clean fish, even though they do it well, they do it efficiently. It requires a lot of water and, and that's not a criticism of the work that Dave does. It's just the reality of it. So I would suggest the Public Works Committee think this through in terms of where in town, something like this might be best suited.
The one nice thing I think about Coughlin Park is if there was going to be restrooms implemented, like that's a big thing that we don't have there and we have those at Wick's, right? And Wick's is definitely central located. I personally hang out more at Wick's and I don't want to watch people clean fish. So I think that if there's one that's more, uh, Wick's is certainly well-attended and I, I, to me, to me, Coughlin seems a little more off the path that way.
Yeah, with you on the whole, the whole idea of maybe doing it at Coughlin is to get those bathrooms.
Right.
Public space for bathrooms and a cleaning station because the water's all connected to it. That I understand why you're thinking of Coughlin Park. The only consideration would be parking is a little challenging over there.
Parking is challenging.
But I, I don't, and, and that, that's a question for Dave as to where he's going to be having his charter park.
Big parking lot up at the top of the hill. So I guess it's not that bad.
Yeah, discussions. They won't pocket for that. And trust me, they can park right in front of what used to be Gleason's down at Water Street and get right on the boat. So I think that would be a, an adjustment. But I think Wick's Park. Yeah, exactly. Right. Parking is less of an issue because they leave early. And I talked to Mr. Engel about this very topic about parking and some of the logistics and possible concerns from the condo next door. Um, but good to hear that the council's open to this.
Yeah, and I'd like to take it up, up to a little bit higher altitude. Um, personally, I'm, you know, to me, this is part of the community's heritage. Um, it's actually part of, part of our history. Um, it's important for, you know, from, from a business standpoint, I believe. I, I think it's an important thing to be able to offer as a lake shore community, this, this amenity for people to be able to engage in charter fishing. So I think it's extremely important. Um, I, I would leave it to the experts and obviously the, the fishermen themselves, the angles to, to guide us on what actually works. Um, I, I see the merits in both locations. I also see potential issues with both, both locations. Um, there's charter fleet is significantly larger in terms of the length of the vessels than, than what's currently accommodated at Wick's Park. Uh, they also require electrical hookups and, and water, which all, all doable, potentially all fixable problems, but I think I'd leave it probably to our Parks and Rec Committee to, um, engage with the angles. I think you may have a subgroup or a work group in your future, Helen. To, to dig deeper into this with the angles. Uh, but directionally, personally, I'm a hundred percent in favor in keeping, uh, charter fishing in Sagatuck. I think it's part of our. I think it's part of our heritage. I think it's absolutely critical that we be able to offer this type of thing along our waterfront. Personally, I love watching fish get gutted.
You'd be surprised. I was gonna say, Scott, that was when I've been around in other lake shore communities, if you've seen the same thing, the kids collect, the families collect because they're entranced by it. So there's a lot of traffic on Wick's Park. There's a lot of people walking through there. And I just think you'd be surprised at the entertainment value of something like that.
Just a little side, a side note, having just been to Key West for my birthday. The the highlight of our lunch at Schooner Wharf was walking down to the marina where one of the charter boats was was putting fish entrails in the water. And I've never seen a larger bull shark erupt out of the water than the one that erupted like jaws and ate an entire tail of a snapper that was being dangled over the stern of the boat, which apparently the charter crews know that this is popular. And they use it and they use it as a marketing tool for future charters. But I'm very much in favor. Lauren, you had something else you want to say?
Yeah, just as far as our next steps, will be as a council be deciding if we should be applying for the grant?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, please.
I would say punt this over to your Parks and Public Works Committee, let them study it for a bit, working with the Engel family. And then let them come back to you with some recommendations on both grants, location. Yeah. And then I will also just mention the Engel family. They're also big into STEM, science, technology, engineering and math. They do some good things with the students in the area. So they're just all around great group.
I know I recall they were last year, they were very involved in the fingerling stocking, which was which was really a great thing to be doing for for the lake as a whole. One last observation, it does seem like there there's something analogous here and there's already a precedent of of working with businesses. I believe the star of Sagatuck, the chain ferry come to mind as somewhat analogous to this in terms of finding a home for a for a business that once again recognizes our history and also recognizes the important economic driver of having a viable fishing industry or charter fishing industry within our community. So.
Yeah, we putting on my planning commission hat, we may want to look at the zoning. City is also subject to its own zoning, so we want to make sure that's not going to be an impediment.
Good point.
Mayor, I believe that the Engels have done a wonderful job with that business over the years, the many years that I know that they've been doing it. And they run a clean ship back there. So I, I, I think no matter where we, where they go, if it were to be at Wick's Park, which, by the way, Russ, I think that's a great idea, Wick's Park as an alternative. However, I know the shopkeepers would sure love to have a bathroom over there at Coughlin Park. They've been talking about that for over a decade. So I think I think that's the convenience. What I wanted to ask is that those shoppers docks would still be utilized as our shoppers docks, right? Or they wouldn't be taking that whole space, would they? Is that the idea?
Yeah, not the whole space. I would never.
Couple slips. You're right. It is underutilized. I remember when it was installed a couple of years ago and people really did like it. But if you go by there in the middle of summer, you hardly see a boat or two there. So it is underutilized.
Fair point. I think I think it is getting discovered. And I think over the past few summers that I've been out, I mean, I know I've utilized it just to pick up friends and family. And I see more traffic than.
I just want to make sure that we still maintain shoppers. I think it's a great thing.
I'm in agreement with you on that.
Okay.
Mister and Mister Mayor, I should add that we would have to review the the original DNR. I think you, the city received a DNR grant for the construction of the shopper dock. So we'd have to review all the language that's included in that as far as what the conditions were for maintaining those to be transient dock.
Very good, very good point. We good on this one? Should we move on?
I would just add that we want to make sure that we don't draw this out to the point where Mr. Where Dave says, I'll just go somewhere else.
Right.
We have to be cognizant of that, too, because I know that that he's probably not going to be at six fifty for long, if he's even out now. So just word of caution.
Mr. Mayor.
Go for it.
To that point, I told Mr. Engel, don't show up to me in the winter. Right? With the expectation that we're going to have a dock for you ready in the spring. So this has been an ongoing conversation. So he's been, we've been talking about this for for a little while. And so fair warning. Yeah, he is. And he understands that, that he won't maybe have all the infrastructure that he needs to have this kind of same professional location that he has now, but he can work into it and work with the city.
And I think directionally, you can you can share with them. So if I'm reading the room correctly, the council feels very strongly that we do want to maintain this this amenity and the bit of history in our community. So I think we can give him that. That sense.
Perfect.
Yeah, great.
But we will not be taking any kind of action, correct?
No, I think this is going to take a little bit of while and I like.
Like you were saying, like to vote for a grant or something like that.
I like your idea of moving it over to Parks and Public Works. Helen can get a work group together. They can also feed feed their recommendations to the planning folks to make sure they're and we even may you know, want to pull somebody in to look at grant opportunities and see how that fits. Once again, infrastructure tourism grant, something like that. So I think we've done a good job with item B. So I would take us to item C on our agenda, which you'll find on page twenty eight of your packet. This is the Venetian Festival. Ryan, do you want to start on this one? Or we've got a number of people? Or you want me to kick it off? I can.
Mr. Mayor, you're you're well versed in this.
I am. I was involved along with Helen was kind enough to join the call and so was so was Lauren. We've, you know, we've heard from the folks at Cow Hill that you know, after nearly a decade of sponsoring the Venetian Festival, their board has taken the decision to, you know, to look for passing the torch to another organization who are interested in perhaps organizing and running the event in twenty twenty three. And I know we've got Jim Sullivan on the line. So I, and Lisa's on the line, Lisa Mies is on the line. So I'd be happy to let any of them offer comments. We did, we did meet virtually through a Zoom call with a number of stakeholders on Monday. You know, the city is very supportive of Venetian continuing. Obviously, it's a big event and it has always been an event that's been run and sponsored by another entity for fundraising purposes. So it's not not a city activity per se, but we are very supportive of it continuing. We know there's a long forty plus year history of the event happening in town. So we're, you know, we're happy to, you know, be a resource to any organization that wants to take it on. And we were happy to facilitate those discussions. And I'm just wondering if I should turn it over to anyone on council or to our folks on the line. Why don't you start, Gregory?
I just wanted to let you know that I do know the history of the of the Venetian Festival for about the last twenty years. So I volunteered with the organization prior to Cow Hill taking over. I remember when when Cow Hill did take over that organization, which was very much supported by the city council at that time. So if anybody has any questions about the history of it, I've been in contact with Sherry Tadaldi, who was a big part of organizing that with Cow Hill Yacht Club. And there is a lot of concern on with folks to take care of that. We all find it a very valuable event here in town. So and it's not just, it's not just a locals event. We have people that specifically make their locations from all around the country and all around the world to come here on that weekend. It is the busiest weekend and has been for at least the last fifteen to twenty years that I know of. The busiest summer weekend in our town for all of our merchants and businesses. So.
Well, thanks for that context, Gregory. Anyone else in the council have any thoughts, observations that they'd like to share?
I was on that phone call and I know Jim Sullivan is online with Rotary. And there is some interest there. He has to talk to his board, but I know the fact that Rotary is at least interested in.
The board has scheduled a special meeting for this Friday.
So there's definitely an interest in another organization taking it on, which thank goodness. And I will echo your statements as far as how busy we are that weekend for tourists, let alone for locals. It is our busiest weekend as far as, you know, my business is concerned, too. So, yeah, it's a busy weekend.
No, thank you. I would just just take this way back. Venetian Festival has been an event every year that I can remember. And many times it was a very informal event where just the mariners themselves would put boats together, have a boat parade. Mike Johnson or his dad would put the fireworks on and that was about the extent of it. But we'd have literally tens of thousands of people in town to the extent we'd have to close the town to people because it was so busy. So Venetian is going to happen whether we're involved or not. And we appreciate, appreciate the Rotary's stepping up as well as the Cow Hill folks. They've been just wonderful. I think we're at a point with some of these events. And I'm speaking individually here that we've got Memorial Day, we've got Veterans Day, we've got Fourth of July, Memorial Day, Venetian, that are events that are going to happen regardless of what we do or don't do, right? People are just feeling passionate about these things. And I think the city's at a point where, and I look at Holland, we're not Holland, but I look at Holland and Holland somewhere or another figuring out how to get events going, specific events like the International Day, the, you know, some other things that are probably in conjunction with the business community to make sure these events are organized. And it's not just one individual volunteer organization that's driving this because that puts a lot of pressure as, you know, the Cow Hill has said, you know, this is doubled in price, et cetera. It's a lot of work. I think the city has an opportunity here to professionalize the management of these events. Not every single parade that comes through town, but some of these events, key ones, Venetian being a biggie, that I think we should, we really ought to be challenging ourselves now to think about, can we take this to another level in terms of organization and support? I don't know what that looks like, but I think we're at the point now where we really need to start thinking about that. And and I know Jamie's done a fantastic job organizing all these events and wonderful. But I think we've reached the point now where I think as a city, we need to look at this at a higher level.
I appreciate the comment, Russ. I do. And you know, certainly we get strong feedback from residents around events, particularly if there's any question about events happening or not happening. Then again, I have to look back, though, at the past few years of community surveying where folks have given us a really strong message that they want us to work on on infrastructure and our parks. I love these events. I participate in these events. And I'm happy with staff sort of, you know, helping and being being helpful, but I do feel fairly strongly, and this is just my view, that that that, you know, either a charitable organization or a business entity should be, you know, the leader, the field marshal that organizes and, you know, takes care of making sure that things like security and safety are being handled, you know. I'm quite mindful of staff's time. These things do take a lot of staff time. From past experience, we've seen this happen. And and I'm that's my only caution is that I do feel that I'm not sure the city should get into the event business. I'm open to discussion. That's my view is just one at the table. But I do have some concerns about us getting over.
Before we go further, let me clarify, I am not suggesting that the city become the event organizer. That's not my suggestion, but I think we need to play a bit of a different role going forward for safety and some other issues that have come up. That's what I'm saying.
I absolutely agree with you, Scott. About twenty, twenty, almost twenty years I've lived here. It has, these organizations have done a wonderful job putting on these events and we've had lots of groups putting on events. I remember back when the CVB did events, they did a wonderful job taking care of everything. Sadaba has a great track record of putting on great events in this town and as well as Cow Hill and other organizations. I think it's a great idea to keep going that route and to encourage these organizations to continue doing events and maybe take on some events you might have dropped before. So, you know.
Any other thoughts around the table? We do have Jim Sullivan online with his hand up. If not, Jim, we'd love to hear from you. Thanks for being on.
Quick status, everybody. Thanks for doing all this work behind the scenes at these workshops. We have scheduled a board meeting and it's dependent upon getting some information from Cow Hill about the past performance and the requirements of what we'd be getting into. We're still in a, let's go ahead and investigate this, but I just wanted to manage everybody's expectations. We really don't know what we're getting into. And so we've asked for cash flow statements, the playbook that they have, lists of sponsors and volunteers, just so we can compare with what we've been doing on other events to see how much incremental push there is to take the event over. We are biased to do that, but we're also quite mindful that it's not a trivial thing. So we are looking into different ways to handle cash if we did take it over through applications that would be prepaid. And people would just flash a wristband that could be scanned by a bartender and we'd have professional bartenders, you know, and all that. Security is an issue. I would now pivot to this thought that I tried to express last year. Yes, there will be events and whether the city organizes them or civic groups do. I would just point out the obvious benefit to us being allowed to do events, which is that we take the money and recirculate it back into the community and needs areas that the government probably would find awkward to fulfill. So I like the public, private partnership that exists, as you know. If you all are thinking about anything, I would recommend this, that you think maybe about the idea of a calendar of these events being pretty routine. And if we could routinize it even more so that everybody could anticipate whether or not an incremental staff member was required to manage the liaison with us without burdening other staff. That might be a worthwhile thing to discuss. Just our our point of view from way out here. But and that is not a veiled criticism of anyone who deals with us now. We just know how stretched you all are. And it, and as these security requirements and other considerations about those related issues begin to grow, I think it might be prudent to think about that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jim. Those are all excellent points. I don't know if anyone else on the Zoom would like to comment. I know Lisa, you're listening. Oh, go ahead, Greg.
I just want to say, we've seen an increase in in safety and safety measures that are needed. I would like to see some of the event folks take on some of those expenses that the city usually pays for, some of them. I know that the fire department and the police department, the last, just the last few years have been asking for, you know, a little bit more money. I remember the Fourth of July when when we had extra police officers available.
Balance it. I'm sorry. I don't want to.
But it would be nice to see that, you know, some of these events eventually, especially the big events like this one, would take up some of those costs.
I would understand and appreciate that, but I think that we also have to understand that we have taxpayers and we have citizens and they are going to want events and to attend events. And that's part of some of the offerings that the city should also provide. It shouldn't be a private endeavor all the time to have support from your firefighters and.
Cow Hill usually writes the city a check?
No, that's correct.
Yeah, they do. Yeah, yeah. So not all the costs. No, I'm not saying all the costs, Helen. I'm just saying that some of the costs so that they have some responsibility in those costs that we're paying.
And as far as a liaison to some of these events, is that something, this is just for discussion. Could that be a council member that could be a liaison or are you thinking maybe like a faith position that?
This is the, Mr. Mayor. So this is the great struggle since I've been here in the last two years. Where I came from in Wisconsin, you know, we had a strong business association that was able to put on events and they actually worked with the county to kind of coordinate events between all of our little municipalities. It was a strong group. Sadaba, in my opinion, unfortunately, is not a strong group to put on events. Normally, in any city, the business association could help with this type of issue, right? I entertain the idea of maybe having like the CVB hire an event event coordinator to help out with Fenville Douglas and just have having somebody be more of a regional coordinator. I don't, that's not their mission. So that's not in their wheelhouse. And, you know, they, I think Lisa was kind enough to entertain the idea, but it was a thanks, but no thanks. And so, you know, the big question for me, coming in at the coattails of COVID with the Fourth of July event where we had to hire more police force, what have you. And people who want to have parades for a lot of parades, and we have another parade on our agenda tonight to discuss is what changed? Because normally the city was was able to have events and just put them on and just it just happened, right? That's kind of my my perspective on things. I shouldn't say that so flippantly, but some of some of the smaller events and parades, they just kind of happen organically almost, right? What what changes and rightfully so is some of the emergency precautions that we now have to take. That's just the reality of the world. So, you know, when people were accustomed to just having these events and suddenly they're being told that they have to, you know, set up precautions and barricades. And they're like, whoa, how many volunteers is this going to take? Like up to forty volunteers to to put in these barricades and all the other safety precautions. So that's what's changed. City staff, you know, we are, you know, I say we are gracious hosts, but we are not event planners. And Jamie, myself, RC, and other staff, Scott Herbert, we take a lot. We, we, we take a lot of time working with emergency coordinators to put, put on these events. And so I guess where I'm going with all of this is that we need a strengthening of. Either a business association or some, some other, other organization to step up and help coordinate events. I, I don't know what that is. Again, I tried, I tried with the CVB, I failed. Um, and then, uh, Sadaba, I think they're trying to reorganize right now. That's kind of my understanding of things. That, that makes the most sense. If Sadaba could get organized and strengthen their power and put on these events. And, and then one other thing that I'll just point out, and this is true all over the country, if not the world, is volunteerism. People that volunteer, it's, it's waning, it's dying out. Um, and I think it's kind of a generational thing. And, you know, I think the people that put on these events for the last, like Venetian fifty years plus, as I understand it. Uh, you know, I think that generation, you know, they've put in their time and they, they just want to go and have fun at this point. But there is not a younger group, I'll just use my age group, you know, I'm forty. You can tell by the gray hair. Um, you, you know, my, my age group, we're, we're, we're not great volunteers. And that's just kind of a generational turnover issue. And so now you have to. And I experienced this in Wisconsin as well. Now you have to actually pay people to, to work or, and or kind of volunteer. I know. But that is just the reality and that's just my, what I've experienced over the last.
Yeah.
Seven, eight, nine, ten years of being in this tourism based economy type business.
I had a conversation with David Langley, President of Sadaba today. Um, and, uh, my heart goes out to him, by the way. His wife June passed away. Um, they're having a showing there on, or I mean, uh, on Wednesday. Uh, or Saturday, uh, she'll be at Dykstra Funeral, um, about, um, I think either eleven or one o'clock. Um, and then, uh, he's having an open house at his house at Serendipity Bed and Breakfast, just so you all know. Um, we had the same kind of conversation. Um, Sadaba is definitely, I remember. When I was a board member with Sadaba in my first few years as, as administrator. Back then, um, it was just me and the barricades and Scott Herbert, and that was basically security. You know, we'd have, of course, the cops would stop by and make sure everything was okay, or the fire department at sidewalk sale to make sure the tents were pushed back. But things have changed quite a bit. And so there is a bigger demand for that. And again, I have to agree with you wholeheartedly. I've noticed, uh, a decrease the last ten years or so, not just with volunteers, but with business owners. That are interested in supporting, um, events, younger business owners. Um, uh, so.
Yeah, just, Jim, I'll, I'll get to you in two seconds, just an observation, just to, I think to build on both of these points is, you know, once again. I think we as a city are very supportive of, of these events, but we, we, we are just very clear eyed about, um. Uh, staffing limitations that we have as a city, as a municipality. You know, I, I'd be open and maybe this is something that Parks Helen will discuss at some point. You know, I'd be very open to the city doing something like, you know, for the summer, hiring a stage in the riser that sits in. And this, obviously we had to run this by Scott Herbert, but you know, a stage in a riser that's there ready for bands at Coughlin Park. Just like a couple of executive quality washrooms for the summer at Coughlin Park that we have a vendor put in. To create, once again, the infrastructure, uh, you know, and, and the amenities in our parks that then. Organizations or the public can then. Staff and, and enjoy and then take the proceeds and do, do good in the community. Uh, that's kind of. For me, kind of, I think how I'd like us to show up, but once again, this is just one voice, one thought in this, in this deliberation we're having. But with that, uh, Jim, you've been very patient, so please.
I just have this to offer. The decline in volunteerism and, and, uh, what we call COVID couch, people have gone to the couch and are not getting up. Uh, and we have noticed that the last year or two. And growing complexity of requirements for security and other related matters, it's getting, uh. I'm, I'm a little worried it's going to get over our heads pretty quickly. But I'm absolutely committed with the city government to, um, fight those trends. Because think about what people come to Saugatuck for. It's bread and circuses. We've got to do a little bit. And I really think that, uh, exposing the government to a full blown staff that does events. You know, there's a revenue stream for that, uh, for that, but, but your volunteerism will always be a problem because. At least we have a, a team of people who know the proceeds are going to be able to go to some objectives and non-governmental, but still important social. You know, spending areas. I, I would love to burnish the, the public, private partnership in such a way that it was professionally managed. And everybody was happy with it. Uh, let's try that before we, uh, chuck the model.
Great. Thank, Jim, great points. Thank you.
Anyone around the age of forty better look out for me because I'm coming. I would just say that the city manager articulated exactly where I was going with it. So your vision is exactly, I didn't say quite as well as you did, but I'm exactly on the same page. Where we need to go.
Great. Well, with that, if there's no further discussion, we have another event to discuss, uh, uh, which is, uh. Item D on page twenty-nine of your packet. And, uh, Brian, do you want to kick this one off for us?
I sure can. Okay. Yeah, this, we received this event application, what, two days ago, I think, Jamie. About two days ago, this week.
Had the cancellation of the December meeting, so. And I did invite the organizer to be here today.
All right, fair enough. Um, so I mean, this is up for the council's consideration. What I would recommend, and I think this has been done in, in past years, is to tell this group. To just utilize the sidewalks for the parade. Um, they may have to jump out in the street because I think.
Is that a pub crawl or is it a parade?
It, it looks like a pub crawl.
It looks like a pub crawl to me too. So I didn't know what that meant about, like, why do you have to close off streets and?
And it's fun.
And it's fun, but it's a small.
But no, it sounds like a good time. I'm just wondering, when I was looking at that, I was like, do you shut off streets for this or do you just kind of wind up at different?
I did sidewalk and pop out in the street when you need to, like, I see street, you don't even have a sidewalk, so you're going to be in the road anyways. Yeah, yeah. And while the event, second line parade, and I had to look up second line because I wasn't, I kind of knew what it was, but it's a Mardi Gras related event. And the first line is the actual parade itself and the second line is the band and the people that are. So called a pub crawl, but it's literally a parade. So the musicians, they, I think the expectation based on what I'm reading here is that they'd be in the street.
No, but I'm reading the application and they're asking for street closures.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, another thing I'd like to point out, you know, from doing these, how many of these have I done in my lifetime? Um, is that there's no insurance for this, uh, event. Um, there was no insurance provided. Um, it says not clear if insurance is needed for a parade, please advise. So I just had a question about that.
It's, it just kind of goes to the conversation we just had. It's like the amount of logistics that would be required to put this event on. We, we had set up a meeting with the police and fire. They, you know, they'll, I'll, I'll call, I think Amy is the applicant. I'll call Amy. And say, you, you're going to have to have like forty or thirty, forty volunteers to do these street closures. Are you able to do that?
And you're saying if it's on the sidewalk, they wouldn't have to close the streets.
Right, right. Use the sidewalk and jump in the road when you need to.
Yeah.
I mean.
It's pretty quiet around here during February. Yeah.
Yeah.
So would they have to resubmit their application to not include the road closures and everything?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm recommending. I'll, I'll call them before your Monday meeting and then we can have another conversation, but. This kind of just plays into the conversation. The amount of personnel and time requirements that are involved in an event that benefits. You know, a pub crawl, a lot of people having a good time, no doubt about it. Uh, there's some history there. But things have changed and there's a lot more required. I don't think they realize that.
Right. Yeah, it's been going on, I want to say maybe four or five years, um, not that long. Um, they just started it just a few years ago.
Oh, good to know. So can, can we, I, I don't believe Amy's on the Zoom call, so can I leave it with you, Ryan, then just to follow up? But I think directionally, uh, I'm going to suggest that alternative to a full blown. Street closure for parade. I think, I don't think anybody loves trying to organize.
Well, it's that also and I, and I am biased, or I think that we close off streets and that when we're doing things for a charitable purpose, much less. Than for, you know, businesses to benefit from it. So we're going to involve city and police and all that. I think that the benefit should be for a charitable purpose and not a.
Excellent point. Thank you. So I, I think we're all good on this one. As we have direction. Okay. Um, I'm going to move us on to, um, discussion item E, which is the ZBA Kate McPolan appointment, page thirty-seven of your packet. Um, Ryan, just, you want to do this, you want me to?
Go ahead, lead in.
Yeah, happy to. Um, uh, myself and the chair, uh, Mr. Kubia, Kubiasik of the, um. Of the, um, Son of Morning Appeals, we did some interviews. Um, both candidates, excellent. Bob and I are recommending, uh, Kate McPolan. She is, you know, former ZBA member. She brings a lot of continuity to the role. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions about that, but that's. I've had agreement for, from the chair of, of the committee to go with this route and I, I support him. Any thoughts, discussion?
No, I would, um, I've known Kate the entire time that she's been in town. She was on the planning commission for, I think fifteen plus years and is a current alternate on the ZBA. Uh, she's very skilled, knowledgeable, so I, I fully support this and thank you again for meeting with Bob Kavaj, Kavajak. Takes a moment. That this process is being followed as per city policy. This is just, I, I appreciate seeing it done this way.
Great. Um, I think that covers E then. If there's no further comments, that will take us to. Uh, F, uh, council meeting rules and procedure amendment. You'll find that on page forty-two of your packet.
And, and Mr. Mayor, I would just mention maybe for time's sake that items F, G and H are kind of all pulled in together. These are the results of your strategic planning session.
Very good, yeah. Um, so let's, I mean, I guess we can just go through them then. This, and the first one is, uh, posed a minute, existing rule. Okay, so this, this is the change to the agenda, correct?
Correct. We did push out a notice that Jamie pushed out a notice to council to see if there's any other items. That council had an issue with. This is again a result of your discussion at the strategic planning session. So this would be the new agenda format. We heard a recommendation today from Mr. Johnson, who was on the call, so. Uh, the council can take this up on Monday.
So was Barry saying that he wanted the second public comment to be moved up?
He wanted.
He wanted ten of.
Ten to be on seven.
Yeah, before reports and I have to agree with that.
I agree with that too.
So ten after seven? Like you wanted, uh, after the first public comment or before the first public comment, guest speakers?
Uh, the first public comment, the public comment on agenda items only at the beginning.
The agenda changes guest speakers, pub, first public comment.
So be prior to public comment, I believe is what was recommended. I don't know if you're still listening, but.
Said to make it number seven. I don't.
Uh, any other thoughts from the council on this? I, I have no objection to that change.
I have an objection.
No, I don't either.
Any, any other feedback from, from you all on, on this agenda? Yeah, I am trying to. Once again, manage the changes we've got in terms of participation in various boards and committees and, and I am trying to. Be respectful of people's time. I mean, I, you know, folks that are here for one purpose, I, I feel giving them the opportunity to get home to their families or. Whatever they have, I, I'm supportive of that.
Yeah, I, I, again, very much appreciate the effort being made here. This is, I think, good for everybody. Um, I still am questioning the six PM start though. Um, still trying to figure out what this problem is that we're trying to solve.
Okay, yeah. That's page forty-four, right?
Yeah.
What was that? The what?
I'm sorry, I jumped ahead.
That's okay. Yeah. So I think we're good on F. So let, let's talk a little bit about, about G. Yeah, no, let, let, your thoughts, Russ, go ahead.
Well, I think if we talk about this, I think we should do so for all board and commission meetings because other ones are at seven. Um, I talked with a couple of people that have been around us for a while. The reason, and it was not the charter, because I read back and read the charter and the charter specifically said the very first meeting of the city council. Had to be at seven thirty. That's all it says. So I think it's up to us to decide what, and it's been seven o'clock forever. But, um, I just still quite, seven o'clock to me makes sense for people that work. Want to have time with their family, come here. And I think what I heard at the strategic planning session was that we were trying to be respectful of. City employees that would have to be here after work, right? Was that one of the considerations for the change? So I think that's an, I think that's an opportunity for discussion of whether we need everybody here for that. I think the seven o'clock makes sense for the public. It's been a precedent we've set and.
Just something I want to, um, correct when I looked into the charter, the seven thirty timeframe that you referenced. Has to do with the election of new officers and that whole thing. That isn't specific to.
Correct, right.
Actual thing. So that was just one.
Correct.
I don't know why that seven thirty thing was even in there. So that was just, it has nothing to do with.
Right, right. Yeah, I'm.
Yeah, and, and not, not to further muddy the waters or, or maybe clear the waters. In researching sort of the need to, um, get councils, uh, kind of voice vote consent to, um, absences, approving absences. Um, Jamie kindly sent me the, the city of Saugatuck rules and procedure for city council meetings, which was adopted July twenty-third of oh seven, two thousand and seven. And that, and I, I apologize if you don't have it, but it says, uh, regular meetings in accordance with section four point one three, the city charter, the regular meetings in Saugatuck city council. Will be held on the second and fourth Monday of each month beginning at seven PM at the council room. So, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's what probably what in seven PM came from. With this, this document here that Jamie kindly found for me while I was researching some other stuff.
So the charter, as I'm agreeing with.
Yeah.
Uh, Lauren, is that the, the, the charter's not a holdback here. That's, that's going to be the policy. Yeah.
I would not be, I would, I wouldn't have a problem with, with, I don't know where you guys stand on the six o'clock, but you make a very logical point. If I work until five o'clock and I have to drive home, uh, maybe I work in Grand Rapids or maybe I work in Holland even. And not just you, but anyone, um, and I, and I have to drive home, maybe get, grab something to eat and run out, that I've got to be there by six. I like the idea of meeting us halfway in six thirty.
But the, the beauty of it is, is that, you know, according to this, we can just by, um. City council may alter or amend these rules at any time by majority vote. So it doesn't sound like we really need to have a major resolution. Or Jamie, may you have a different view?
Resolution out there that states that the city council can change the rules procedure at any time.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm sympathetic to. Getting staff and participants in these meetings, you know, because I, I really love not only participation, obviously of the council, but I, I, I love. Making this as accessible to the public as possible. Um, you know, you know, COVID has sort of caused us to jump forward in technology. A lot of folks now, you know, we, we've got, we, we've got a council member joining, you know, remotely by Zoom, which is wonderful. So I, you know, personally, if, if, if we can move them up, I'm very supportive of that, but once again, I don't want it to. Cause someone to not be able to participate fully because they're rushed or, or, or that. So, um. You know, once again, I'm, I'm open to discussion. I think, I think if one of us can't comfortably make it by six or six thirty, then I'm afraid we, we would probably need to stay to seven. But, but you know, Russ, I'll put it to you, 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 I think are currently the only one that works frequently, you know, more than. Ten minutes from here. Um, and I, and I can't speak for members of some of the boards and commissions, but I think most of them. Are fairly flexible at this point, just, just the way people's work, let's have changed.
That was a six o'clock meeting.
Okay.
Maybe there.
So I guess thoughts.
Well, I take myself out of the equation. I think about the other people that have to, that would want to be at the meeting. I think this is a public. It's a public meeting and I think seven o'clock was decided on for very specific reasons and I'm not sure those reasons have changed that would compel us to make a change at this point. So I take myself out of the equation. I'm elected to be here, so I will be here. Um, but I just think about the public and those that want to participate. And I think seven o'clock is the logical time. It's been that way. Boards and commissions meet at seven o'clock, planning commission. So that's where I'm coming from.
So I, I was inclined to, you and I had, had this conversation at the strategic planning and I thought the same thing about the public. There's a reason that we're here for the public. But the one thing, well, I have two things to say. One, everyone is included via Zoom and I don't think that that's, uh, prohibitive to, to be, to be available. Six o'clock on Zoom. Also, um, the demographics of our population are such that. Most people are not racing home to feed the kids. I mean, well, I'm, I'm just saying that, that I, I, I don't know and we could, you know, uh, put it out there as, as a question, but I don't know that would be. Uh, prohibive of anyone to be able to be here six o'clock. Um, and I think it's a, given the technology, anyone can show up via Zoom. And, you know, we're not, uh.
Yeah.
Royal Oak.
Yeah, right, right. And yet, I was, uh, happy to move it at six o'clock. It's a strategic meeting. I've always felt seven o'clock was too late over the years. When I was coming here, you know, for Sadaba events and waiting until eight, eight thirty till they bring up my event. You know, um, so I always felt that it was later. I, I guess I'm pulling back to the six thirty just to appease and find that happy medium.
How, how about this? Uh, uh, you know, these are all good points. How hard would it be for us to put out a survey monkey to the community and just?
I, I wanted to ask that, but I didn't want to ask it.
Right.
And, and, and give them three or four choices.
Takes that long, would it?
Jamie thoughts?
Put that together and send it.
You put your hand.
Do it tomorrow.
I mean, I just, uh, this, this is one that's easy. We can kind of chop and change and, and I don't think. I mean, as long as we're compliant with our charter and, and, and these rules of. I mean, as long as we're compliant with our charter and 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 these rules of our meetings, I think it would just be interesting. I mean, because I I like your point, Russ. I just, I think I'd like to see some data on it though. You know, I mean, are people more, to Helen's point, are they more kind of? It's seven thirty, I want to go to bed.
Oh, God. Oh, my God.
I know, I I've got so much to do, I can't even focus on city municipal matters until seven P M. So, I mean, this is, this is a small thing. Once again, though, I I do want to take everybody's lot, lives is, you know, we're all volunteers here. You know, um, you guys are getting paid, but still, it's it's a, it's it's a long night for you guys, particularly if you have to drive or get home and take care of family. So I want to be, I want to be sympathetic to that as well. So a- any uh, objection, just to kind of put in the question out there to the community?
I think it's a great idea.
I think it's wonderful. Yeah, I agree.
Let's, let's try it. And that will also give our board and commission members a chance to, yes, Jamie.
Do you like to give me the times you'd like me to? Six, six thirty and seven?
How about that?
What about your?
Go ahead.
So I've heard this, the the discussion happen uh, in many places in the country. Um, what about your restaurant workers that are working second shift? Maybe they want to be involved, so you might end up with a ten A M recommendation. Six, six thirty and seven?
You limit the choices.
Six, six thirty and seven?
No change, and then six, six thirty.
Existing time, seven or six, six thirty. Yeah. So I mean, are we all comfortable with that? I think just just to, just to see what the, what the, what the community temperature is on.
That'll be interesting.
Is this uh, just for city council meeting or just labeling this as boards and commissions in general?
Well, the starting time, six, six o'clock.
So I, I don't.
And Helen's Parks Committee makes it makes it ten A M.
Ten A M.
So, um, let's get, let's, so meetings, let's keep it to council, let's keep it to council meetings.
Get some data.
For now.
Yeah. Good idea. We'll see how it goes.
Uh, well, now that we're, now that we've opened up this Pandora's box.
Oh, no.
Do we discuss the times for the workshops?
I will, I will be honest with you, Mayor, is that four o'clock is difficult for me from a work standpoint.
It's also uh, hectic for me to get here as well. Um, uh, usually on Wednesdays, I'm working either at.
I do have to leave my day job an hour early for.
I think that Holly is, I think that Holly has also had.
At that, I'm in the same position you are.
As somebody who has to make dinner for my kids.
I'll look to Ryan and Jamie and even the other Ryan, uh, thoughts on getting a community reaction to four P M being maybe a bit early for uh, the.
Sure. Well, maybe there's a compromise in between. Yes. Well.
Because I know we we moved workshops from Thursday to Wednesday to help you guys have time to prep.
Yes. So. Needed, yes. Okay, well, also ask workshop time, offering four and five P M. Yeah, five P M, two options, four and five?
Five and six.
No change.
I think.
Personally, I would say let's stick with the council time first, and let's talk about workshop because I.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fair.
All right, fair enough. Let's, okay, but I'm glad we discussed. These are solvable problems. If if all our problems were this easy.
Yeah.
Um, great. So I think we know where we're going, Jamie. You you good? Awesome. Thanks, Milan. All right. So, um, the infographic, page forty-six.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yeah.
Uh, Sarah, wi- wi- with our team, she put this infograph together. Um, we also sent out the detailed results from the strategic planning session, so that'll be on your agenda for Monday. And you, um, I recommend council discuss those items. Have a review if you'd like.
Lovely, lovely. That's great. Um, will you kind of lead that discussion or just kind of lay it out for us?
Be happy to do it, yes.
I think that's perfect. Awesome. Uh, with that, I think we've got through our robust list of discussion items. Um, that, for the survivors, that takes us to public comment period. Anybody in the room have a public comment? I don't see anyone. Uh, anyone online that wishes to um, make a public comment from the world of Zoom? Uh, no, I don't see any hands raised, Jamie. Nothing. Okay. Uh, that covers public comment. Uh, we have no correspondence. Uh, that will take us to council comments. Uh, let's go around the room. Helen, uh, kick it off, please.
I think we had a really productive workshop. I look forward to addressing a lot of the things, especially the, with the Coughlin Park and uh, uh, look forward to digging more into that. Thank you.
I I'm glad that we were able to reach out to um, Wendy and uh, looks like we've, we're starting a plan of action, very happy about that. Uh, that is why we're here, like you guys had mentioned, you and Scott had both mentioned. Um, uh, and um, and uh, just happy to be here. I do have a little observation from coming to council meetings for many years. Um, I've noticed in the last year or two, and don't take this the wrong way. Um, that I see more of our lawyer participation at our regular meetings where I'm not so sure if they're needed. Um, I'm just seeing that as a, as a, um, as an expense that I know that we didn't have before. Um, I know years ago, we didn't have a lawyer present at all of our council meetings and workshops. And um, and I just wanted to point that out. I think it's something that we might want to look at. Um, uh, just for cost effectiveness.
Um, the only comments I have is this was an enjoyable workshop. There was a lot of discussion, which is nice. It's good to have these discussions where we don't often do this in such detail. I know it was a lengthy list. It was worth it tonight. That was a lot of good discussion. That's it.
Thanks. I would echo, um, council member Stanton's comments about the workshop. I'll, this is why I'm elected, because I love these conversations with my fellow elected officials. We mean, I'd always agree, but I love the conversation and the debate. I think it's good for us and it's good for the community. Also, we just received news today that the U S Department of the Interior and, excuse me if I tear up, but this has been a big part of my life, has approved the National Register of Historic Places placement for Mount Bald Head. But we already had the state thing nailed down, but the U S Department of Interior just notified the state today that they are going to be putting us on the National Register. So eventually you'll see a plaque up there. So that's a big deal. That's a big deal for this community. So I want to thank everybody.
I'd remind you to bring that up, uh, Monday.
I will. Yeah, well, actually, I'll share the communication. So, um, so anyway, Nathan Nettering at the state actually sent us an email today. So. Yep. Thank you.
Great. And I'll just wrap up. Um, once again, uh, you know, kudos to Russ for really kind of uh, marshaling the resources around Mount Bald Head. You know, it's been a pleasure to work with you on that project even before you were on council. So, um, you know, a lot of that, you know, we we obviously can't uh, discount the huge role that a guy by the name of um, Chuck Gustafson played. Um, but Russ, you've also been instrumental in getting us to this point. So congratulations on it. It's well deserved. Um, and with that, once again, I would just echo what what Lauren said. I I really enjoy these sessions, uh, having uh, more open, more less formalized deliberations and 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 the willingness of of the team here to sort of, you know, just try to work and and do things a little bit better and and try to make some changes. They might be small changes. Sometimes they might be big changes, but I really appreciate everyone's openness to talk about them and just to see how we can continue to serve the community in a better way. So with that, um, I guess I'll take a motion. No, I don't, it's, it'll be a roll call to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Motion from Stanton.
I'll second.
Second from Muncie, we'll get that. So I'll, a roll call for. Oh, we can do a voice vote on this one? All right, all in favor?
Yeah.
Meeting adjourned.
You know, interesting when I was going.